All right, folks, it's six o'clock. We'll get started with our regular meeting and have a call to order. And we'll do the pledge if we would. Ms. Jackie, would you do that, please? And Eric's gonna do the pledge for us. So if everybody would stand clear.
You got both of us doing the pledge.
Yeah. You're doing the pledge, Eric will be the prayer.
Eric, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. And Father, thank you for this time together as we are about your business and about the business of Mount Pleasant. Father, we pray blessings on our city. We pray that everything that's done tonight is in accordance to your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, folks. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White.
Here.
Jacqueline Granberrys.
Here.
Mike Davis.
Here.
Eric Harvey.
Here.
Willie Alderson.
Here.
All present.
All right, thank you. We've got two sets of minutes from our study session of April the fourteenth and April the nineteenth. And once you've had a chance to review, I'll entertain a motion. Move that we accept the minutes as presented. Got a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next two things we've got are proclamations. And if the commission would like to come forward with me, we'll do these, because we've got two for the evening. And the first one's for Ms. Alyssa Lemay. Come forward, please, ma'am. It's a pledge that you've won. Getting ready to take your post. All right. This is a proclamation, and we're honored to do this for you. Whereas the citizens of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family, and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. And whereas Alyssa Lemay, an alum of Mount Pleasant High School, possesses these characteristics and is being recognized for her outstanding accomplishments. At Mount Pleasant High School, she received multiple awards in basketball and softball, was voted Miss MTHS and Homecoming winning for senior year, and is the all-time leading scorer for both men's and women's basketball. She graduated in the top five of her class. Whereas Alyssa received multiple college basketball offers, choosing Free Hardman University in Henderson, Tennessee. Great school, but. And at Free Hardman, she represented Mount Pleasant High School, well-received, with two conference championship rings and one national championship ring, three all-conference individual awards, and was three-time National All-American Honorable Mission. Scored over thirteen hundred points in her college career, and set two records in AMC Conference tournaments for three points made and total points made in a game. She was nationally ranked in four different categories. She was on the Dean's and President's List and academic all-conference team seven times. Just saying. Whereas the city of Mount Pleasant and its mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring this outstanding individual for her accomplishment at this time, now therefore I, Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, as Alyssa Lemay Day. And call upon all citizens of the City of Mount Pleasant to join us in recognizing Alyssa Lemay for her accomplishment. Anything you'd like to say? We're proud of you, that's fair enough.
Thank y'all so much, and I really appreciate this.
Is there any family that'd like to come up and have their photograph, ma'am? We'd be happy to do that right now.
Let's say you have a city attorney and a city manager, for both went to college in basketball.
That's right.
We understand.
She played free.
Yeah.
Come on.
It's her day, come on.
It's her, this is y'all's day. Congratulations. Yeah, for all the family, got copies for you.
Michael Hay was her first coach. My teacher died. He's in training for him.
She does. She does need a real honor then, we shouldn't put that in. You talk about having adversity, my gosh. Congratulations. All right, the next one we have is actually going to be recognized on Memorial Day when we get into this. I was unaware of who these gentlemen were until I started reading this, and it's quite an accomplishment. This is for the Stein Brothers. And I'll just go right into it. Being hereby known that, whereas the citizens of the City of Mount Pleasant are rightfully proud of those individuals who bring personal pride, have a dedication to success, believe in family and spiritual values, and bring recognition to our city. And whereas the Stein Brothers possess these characteristics and are being recognized for their service, sacrifice, and bravery while serving our country. Whereas Morris and Hymanstein were both born and raised in Mount Pleasant. Hyman graduated from Halon High School, and Morris graduated from Columbia Military Academy. Well, you talk about a fun day, I'm seeing a red. Whereas they both joined the Army in nineteen forty-two, Morris was an officer stationed in the Pacific and was killed by a Japanese sniper in the Philippines in nineteen forty-five. Private First Class Hymanstein served in Europe and participated in D-Day, he was killed in France in nineteen forty-four. They are true heroes, as they gave their lives for the freedom we enjoy today. It doesn't say this in there, but they donated their two heart parts to the city. Whereas the City of Mount Pleasant's mayor and board of commissioners wish to join in honoring those outstanding individuals at this time, we thank them for their service and sacrifice for our country. Now therefore, I, Bill White, Mayor of the City of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim Memorial Day, Sunday, the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, the Stein Brothers' Day, and call upon all citizens of the City of Mount Pleasant to join us in duly recognizing and honoring these outstanding men for their service, bravery, and sacrifice.
Because he couldn't get here, but we told him we would send him a picture along with the proclamations. The brother could not get here. Perfect.
All right. Anything anybody'd like to add to that? I know y'all know the Lemay family. Just really proud of. You know, he was one of mine that came through. You know, I just think it's amazing we've got a national champion. I think that may be the first for Mount Pleasant. Yeah, it is. All right. B, a certificate of compliance for Jeff Tejans and for Tejans Food Land.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is required every two years to be able to sell wine in the grocery store for CB. And Chief Hayes done a background check, and everything came back fine. So with your vote and approval, Loretta has the certificate for the mayor to sign. Okay.
Yeah, required mayor and vice mayor, and those, yeah.
Okay.
All right, any comments, questions? Do we need to?
I would vote on it, yes.
Yeah, okay, just to be safe. So I'll entertain a motion that we approve this certificate of compliance. Got a motion, do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Number six. Completion Review of Unfinished Business from Prior Meeting. A, Ordinance Twenty Twenty-two dash ten ninety-three. Again, this is a public hearing and final reading. An ordinance to adopt electronic citation regulations and fees for the City of Mount Pleasant Police Department and Municipal Court.
Mayor, Commissioners, this is the E Citation Ordinance that we passed five years ago, and it's good for five years. So every five years, we have to renew it, and that's simply what we're doing tonight, is renewing it for another five years.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Hearing none, understanding this is a public hearing and the final reading. Would anyone in the audience like to speak? Please let the ministers, let no one care to.
I make a motion we pass, I want this twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-three.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, Ordinance Twenty Twenty-two dash ten ninety-four. Again, this is a public hearing and a final reading. An ordinance declining to amend Title fourteen, Zoning and Land Use Control, Chapter Two, Zoning Ordinance of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code, the same being the zoning ordinance for the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, including the Municipal Zoning Map Incorporated, therein by rezoning a property from low-density residential R-one to high-density residential R-three. And I notice on our signing sheet that the largest portion of the folks here are from Mill Pond Road, which I know is adjoining. So I had a conversation today with Cory briefly, and I'm gonna let Cory lead this, please. And so we can understand the.
I don't think, is there anybody on here from the developer?
Is the applicant here?
Okay.
Okay. So this is a rezone request. The request is to rezone this property from R-one to R-three. The planning commission recommended that you not do that. On first reading, you also recommended, or you voted to not make the change. Today, my request would be that you consider your factors and make the decision whether or not to rezone this property based off of these four factors. There's been some talk about conditional zoning. My recommendation is that we don't consider that, that that would be something that needed to go back to the planning commission on a new application. And my position is also that that would be a different application, so it wouldn't have to wait a year. But what has happened is we've talked with the developer, and they've proposed something different than what went through the planning commission. But what's before y'all tonight is the rezone to R-three, and you need to make your decision based off of these four factors. If you could, best we keep our discussion within these boundaries. And that's really all I've got.
To make sure I understand that they can come back, they don't have a timeframe. They can come back if it's a different application.
So there's a section in our zoning ordinance that you have to wait one year for successive subsequent applications. My thought would be if they're asking for something else, it's not really a. This is to keep people from just asking for the same thing over.
Okay.
But I think that they're, if they ask for something different, like a different zone or a different sort of zoning plan, then that could come back there. And we, yes.
Cory, this may not have nothing to do with it, but on number one, the land use. I don't know if this developer knows what that land was originally used for. I mean, that, that place out there was mined. You had deep crevices where they, you know, where they got the phosphate out of the ground. Then the government paid, you know, Mr. Floyd, I guess he got it through some kind of grant or whatever. So he went in there and they cleaned this property up. And like trees or whatever, you know, they was pushed off into these crevices. And I don't know, you know, when somebody goes build a house, I just want, you know, my knowledge of knowing what went on out there, you know, where somebody built a house and they come back two or three years later and say, hey, my house has done settling, I've got all kind of cracks. And they said, well, this could be the reason for it.
My thought would be if anybody developed this land, they would have to do all the tests and things to make sure it. But my also interpretation of number one is the land use plan is y'all zoning ordinance.
Not the condition of the land.
But I just wanted to put that out there, but that.
That makes sense.
They're trying that out there, mindset it right now.
I think that would come out for any builder.
Yeah.
When they do testing for. Whatever it is they test for, so.
Okay.
Not gonna pretend to know how that works, but.
It was denied, declined, declined. I think they did wind up declining when it was said and done.
Okay.
So with that being said.
So under number one, then it is zoned for three then, right?
No.
No. Okay, only one.
Yeah. They're asking to go from R-one to R-three. But I think when you're looking at that one, you look at what y'all did with the zoning map, what you've done, the changes, do you feel like this property is supposed to be R-three? Or do you feel like it's supposed to be R-one?
Okay. That's the only thing, you know, I guess when something comes back from the planning commission, we put the planning commission, you know, to oversee all of this, and then when it comes back to us, you know, we might not, I guess, necessarily have all the knowledge, maybe.
The planning commission's in place to send it to the commission. And then it's the commission's responsibility to approve or decline. And that's the reason, that's the reason why anything you're doing rezoning that is brought before the commission. So understanding that the four points that we have to keep our focus on, please.
Okay.
I would like to hear from the commission first, and then we'll give the people in the audience an opportunity to speak, please. Because there's several of you listed here, but I'd like for us to go through this, see where the vote comes, and we'll go from there.
Okay. For the Ordinance Twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-four. Number one, the amendment is requesting zoning is not in agreement with the land use plan for the area. There would be no, I mean, there would be adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare. No property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from change to the detriment of the general public. Conditional effect in the area have not changed to a significant extent to warrant an amendment to the area land use plan. And subsequently, whatever, y'all don't understand, the zoning map.
Subsequently.
Subsequently, the zoning map. So I am saying no.
Gonna touch y'all forward.
Yeah, so I'm saying no. They're making it a R-three.
All right. Vice Mayor, I'd like for, before we go to a vote, I'd like, I want each to have their opportunity.
I think, I think she made kind of a motion, right? Or they, but we can't vote without the public hearing?
That's right, that's why I'm giving each commissioner an opportunity to speak first, please.
The developers here now, developers here.
Okay.
And I would like for Vice Mayor to speak, because she serves on the planning commission for us, and she's our representative, so.
Because of the, because of the, me being on the planning committee and talking to the residents in the area and the people surrounding there who are very much against it, that according to our code, it just, it's like she was saying, number one, that, you know, the amendment is not in agreement with the land use. So therefore, we wouldn't really have a reason to change it to R-three.
Yes. Eric? I agree with number one and number two mainly. You know, it's not in agreement with the land use. There would be adverse effect on the adjoining property owners with going to R-three. Mike?
I will go just like what Eric said.
Okay.
I wanted to.
All right, all right. Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone in the audience care to speak on this? Yes, sir. If you don't mind, please state your name and your address.
George Sledge, ten thirty-six Mill Pond Road.
Yes, sir.
You are correct, there is no hardwood out there on that land. When we built our houses out there, we had to go anywhere from thirteen to fifteen foot deep and put four foot of seventy-thank rock, four foot of even smaller rock, and then put our footer around. So I don't know about that land. These people are from out of town. But I'm just telling you what it is in that area out there. There is no hardwood in mine land.
It was mined, yeah.
In mine land.
It was mined.
But anyway, other than that, you know, I've been here October fourteen years, this coming October fourteen years, and I've seen this traffic here increase three times what it was then. I can't imagine having six hundred homes or three hundred homes, what it's gonna be. Because the other one of them's gotta gone down that red light, my chum. They can't go Hoover Motor Road. You get killed going Hoover Motor Road. Two Volkswagen's can't pass on them. They ain't done nothing to it in fifteen years, fourteen years. So for the rest of the case, and thank y'all.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Seeing no one?
The developer's gotten here since we started this.
Care to speak?
Sure.
If you don't mind, please state your name, and I'll write it in here, please.
Ted Martin. You know, I think I mentioned in the first hearing that we had, you know, we want to try to do something nice for this community and do a nice development there. You know, there were a lot of conversations, you know, had prior to us purchasing this property about trying to help you. And I mean, it's not like this is the only property that we're trying to improve there. I'm also a part owner in the apartment complex down here by the Dollar General that we're looking to improve and try to raise those values. We own a couple of properties out here by the highway. We're not a, we're not looking to come into this community and, you know, one and done this thing and run out of here with whatever. But, you know, as I mentioned in that first meeting, the main reason that we wanted to go to R-three zoning is because not so much about the density, it's more so about the way, the way the zoning code reads around the development of said lots. We've been developing now for about seven years in the Nashville area, in all communities, I mean, in multiple communities. And there always seems to be a trade-off that I think gets lost in translation in development. When you start going to wider, you know, larger lots, it makes it very, very non-cost effective to develop, which ends up a lot of times being bigger lots and lower quality housing. We don't want to do that. We want high-quality housing, we want to try to raise values in the area. But, you know, we, I think the question I have, that I came here today, is I pretty much knew after the first reading that this is probably not gonna go forward. We'd like to come back, we've actually already spoke to, I have a mechanism, Cory submitted another plan, a different plan, and want to try to work with the local community to make it work. My question would be, would it make more sense for us to withdraw this particular application? And I'm talking about with speed and longevity, because we obviously want to try to get back to this as soon as possible. Yeah. Does it make more sense for us to withdraw the application and try to resubmit? Does that make it quicker, or should we just deny? And then is there any type of limitations?
So you missed his speech, but basically, the recommendation would be for y'all, for them to vote on the R-three as is tonight, and then for you to resubmit something different to Rodney Howell's office.
Okay.
And we'd like to talk with, you know, your planner and our other planner and see if they.
You spoke with Michael, too, great.
I did, yes. But there is a section in the planning commission that says you have to wait one year for subsequently, subsequent applications. But I told them my position would be if you're asking for something different than just straight up R-three, it would not be a.
It would be a different.
It would be a different application.
Okay.
But I don't want to recommend that they send it back to the planning commission. I'd rather it be reapplied, you know?
Okay.
And I think that could be just as quick as going back.
Okay. Sounds good, work. That, that works.
Thank you very much, Sam. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing no one else? Yes, sir.
Here again, like he said, Austin Fettig. They knew what this zoning was when they bought that property. And if we open Pandora's box here, Locke's gonna have, he's licking his chops out there. Mr. Green's licking his chops across the road. Thank y'all.
All right. That being said, roll call vote, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
No.
So I make sure.
Right. She's got a motion.
She has a motion, I don't think we have a second.
Second.
Unless Ms. Granberrys was a second.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yes, decline.
Okay. Jacqueline Granberrys?
Yes, decline.
Mike Davis?
Decline.
Eric Harvey?
Decline.
Willie Alderson?
Decline.
Five zero in favor of denying the change of the zoning.
All right. Thanks to everybody for coming. We certainly appreciate. All right, let's see. Next we got number seven, monthly report for mayor. And the only thing I've got is they had a right nice turnout Saturday for the art festival. I don't think it was quite as large as last year, far as participants go. But they had a nice thing over at the Greenfield, so that was, that was great to see. That's all I've got.
I think all the pictures are gonna be on display at Donna's office.
At Donna's, okay, good. That's all I've got. Number eight, monthly financial and budget report, Ms. Loretta.
Think you all received, should have received yesterday, the monthly report. I do want to point out one thing, I had been asked by Mr. Harvey to look at the sales tax, and there's nothing that specifically has the amount on the extra that we're getting from the school. But what we can do is show the increase in that sales tax line item. And that, in your report, that would be line item three one six one zero, local sales tax. From two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, which was the prior year, it increased by sixty-one thousand eight hundred forty-eight dollars or twelve percent. Then if you look at from twenty-one to twenty-two, which would be after, after the change is made, that same line item increased two hundred and sixteen thousand ten dollars or thirty-nine percent. So we did see quite a difference in that. Most of that difference would, we assume would be attributed to that.
Yes, absolutely. So, and this may be, Mayor, pardon me, if I need to, this is, the conversation needs to happen after we can, but, so if, if our taxes are going up and we're like, we get in that dire strait, kind of like we did the last time, where we're like, is it an option to partially fund that and keep part?
You, you.
No.
As far as.
It's either all or nothing, right?
No, you can pass something, you can go back and pass something to say you want to dedicate that money. It's not a final.
Yeah, but you take, you take part of it.
Yeah, do all.
It's either all or nothing, yeah.
You can go back, yes.
So all is the half, right?
Correct.
That's correct. Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
All right, any other questions of Loretta? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to accept the monthly report. Ask presenter.
Motion, do we have a second? Second. Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, monthly report from city manager.
Yes, Mayor, Commissioners, I just have a couple things. Want to let you know that we're having some real problems with our email system and viruses coming, and on Monday, Michael Haywood is changing over to the, am I saying it correctly, Windows, Microsoft three sixty-five, to be able to protect it. I mean, I literally got a dozen viruses emailed to me today. So your emails will be down on Monday. You won't be able to get your city emails on Monday. And we'll get it back as soon as we can, but wanted to let you know that that's going on. Uh, also wanted to follow up with you on the budget. We'd like to have, schedule one-on-one meetings with you. We also want to make sure that you get to hear from the department heads on some of the things that they do want to have that may or may not be in the budget right now. We're planning on doing that, the study session in June to make sure that you get to hear from the department heads. And the last thing I have is remember a long time ago Scott Supicay came here and talked about money to help fix homes. Finally have the information on that program. I've got packets here that you can tell people they can come to City Hall to get it, that they meet the income requirements, all the different things they can do. This money is, it goes through South Central Tennessee Development District, but we actually have it here. I know some have asked about it. I'm happy to give you a packet, uh, before you leave today, but that program is now up and running now.
Good.
I want to make sure you're aware of that.
That's good.
And, and that is all I have. Thanks.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, Kate? Number ten, special reports from other city departments or committees. Wastewater.
We've got your bars report in front of you. The, the most important news, like I said, at the, uh, study session is that the trunk line, uh, rehabilitation is finished a hundred percent, except for the fact that they haven't picked up that waste collars dumpster there on Magnolia. But otherwise, it's finished. We are very close to bidding out Rainy Street. And, uh, there's a notice to proceed for the wastewater treatment largest, um, improvements for May twenty-ninth. So that would mean we'll begin construction shortly on that. And we were about to close out the influence pump station, so finally seeing a lot of progress there moving forward on, on that.
Good. Good, good, good. Any questions on wastewater? Gas?
No report. We've had several that have been, uh, trained and updated on their training in gas, but otherwise everything's running smoothly there.
Good deal. Any questions? Eleven, new business. A, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-five, and this is a first reading, an amendment to ordinance twenty twenty-one dash ten seventy-five, appropriating revenues and expenses of maintaining departmental functions, functions of the city of Mount Pleasant for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, providing an effective date.
And Mayor and Commissioners, you have something in front of you that looks like this without my handwritten note here. And that is the budget amendment changes that are part of what Loretta's put in front of you. What we added in my handwriting here is you all passed last month the ability for utilities to purchase the antennas that will improve the meter reading. And that was thirty-two thousand, and that is not included, but it'll be included before we have it on second reading. And then that list would be complete. But if you have any questions on what we've outlined there, um, on that list for the budget amendment, we're happy to address them.
And I would appreciate all of you. I appreciate y'all taking the time to sit down with them. I can tell you there's, I know I put forty-plus hours in it myself. So, and I know the work that all of the departmental folks have put in it. And again, I want to thank them again publicly at this meeting for all the work they've done with this for next year and it's coming up this second, but, uh, we've got the number of, uh, amendments we have to make. Is this the second one for the year?
This, yeah, the, the last one for sure.
I remember when we used to do it every month. So, uh, thank you. All right. Any questions? Again, this is just the first reading on that. And as you can see, it's gonna coincide with getting the-
There will likely be a few minor changes between now and second reading.
But there'll be, as you can see, it's following in accordance with our budget for the next year as well. Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-five as presented.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. B, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-six, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting annual budget and tax rate for the year beginning July the first of twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, I am sorry. And again, this is the first reading. And for those in the audience, it may not have been at the work session. There will be some changes of this in the next thirty days as the other commissioners get an opportunity to come in and do their one-on-ones. There may be a few little tweaks here and there for some things. So just understand this is the first blush.
And I'm gonna just briefly go over a few things, Mayor and Commissioners, that are included in this budget. And then I know that Cory wants to talk about, uh, she's got an updated version where you've got some red ink. Am I, is that the right one?
Yeah.
Because it says the tax rate. So what we have included, uh, train for commissioners as requested in this budget. Um, building permits are forecasted to double because of the tile plant expansion. Police Department has new vehicles they're gonna lease. Fire Department is increasing its planner and advisor services because of everything, the growth that we have going on. We have, uh, the Fire Department had a vehicle that we budgeted for next year, but we believe it's gonna be purchased in this year. Uh, Street Department does not have any capital yet, but Ted has submitted something to us, and we're gonna go over that with you guys next month on, on what, what we're looking at just as a start there. Uh, we continue to lose money in sanitation with the increase in our dumping fees, and we need to just acknowledge the fact that that's going on. So we have, uh, put sanitation and streets into the general fund. And we are trying to go right down the middle and pay half streets, half sanitation, where before quite a few more employees, five were in sanitation and only three were in streets. You'll see that as we take a closer look at that budget next month. The museum requested four thousand dollars. Uh, typically, we just pay their, uh, gas bill, and they're wanting us to help pay some salaries. We're not recommending that at, at this time. Capital projects include fifty thousand dollars for the ADA bathroom that we intended to get done this year, but could not because we couldn't find a contractor that could do the work. And so we're gonna go ahead and roll that into next year, as well as some improvements within this courtroom right here. And that total is sixty-six thousand dollars. Wastewater, um, we basically got Matthew Johnson to tell us of this giant pot of money that we have to spend, how much will we spend in this fiscal year? And he has it at three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for Rainy Street and eight million eight with the rest of the, the large rehabilitation. And then finally, in Parks and Recreation, we transferred three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars in cash from a bond recipients to help pay for the HVAC, which actually came in at only a hundred and sixty. Remember, we were talking to people from Train that had all these big ideas of what they're gonna do, and we ended up just bidding it out, and we ended up doing the HVAC for one sixty. So that leaves two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in Parks Fund to help with projects and splash pad. You'll have all this in writing with you before a second reading, but I just wanted to repeat it so that y'all knew some of the things that already, that, that are part of the change, that it's printed in front of you. But I'm gonna let Cory go ahead and tell you about her version here that has the red ink on it.
Yes, so we do not have the, this is a reappraisal year. So that means that all the properties have been reappraised in Marion County. We do not have the certified tax rate yet, but we are anticipating exceeding it. And when you exceed the certified tax rate, you have to like say some, you have to be very clear that you're doing that. So I went ahead and put that language in the written ordinance. Um, so the, the red at the top is explaining the process of the reappraisal and certified tax rate. And then on the second page, where we, where we actually set the tax rate, I've put in there in bold that we are exceeding the tax rate, the certified tax rate. So the way this works is when you have a reappraisal year, values go up, so the tax rate is supposed to be a neutralizer. It's supposed to make it so where both don't go up. But we are proposing, and the budget is based off a dollar sixty-nine, which is your current tax rate. And so that's, even though the number stays the same, it's technically an increase. So we will put a notice in the paper. We'll do all the things that we're supposed to, but this is just putting it in your ordinance so that we have it in a clearer record, um, all in one place. So, and there, I base it off of a resolution that counties passed. So this was a, a sample that came from them.
Unless we have feedback that changes anything, this will be in front of you all in black at the next meeting.
Yeah, so if they pass this one, this version on first reading, then we'll just have, we'll all accept the changes and I'll be back with them.
All right, I've got a question.
Clear as mud.
I've got a question. I thought that the USDA wastewater, we were gonna have to use a loan person. It was not gonna be eight-eight this year. I thought it was a smaller number. Because we're showing all this out of grant.
Oh, you're back on the budget, okay.
Well, that's what she was talking about too, so.
What page are you on there?
I, I'm looking in the book, and I don't, I did not bring my work papers. But if you'll remember, we had a distinct discussion about that, that that looked too high.
You have to use loan first. You can't get the grant.
I, I understand. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Because the loan's only five million bucks total between the two.
You can probably find it.
Page eleven, you got it up here?
I won it.
I won it.
It's in wastewater. I can go out to the car, and I think I've got my work papers in there. I distinctly remember us, we, we can get this in the next thirty days because this is, this is the first read. But I distinctly remember us having that conversation that that number was probably gonna be lower than eight-eight.
Yeah, it did.
And we had it last Thursday, didn't we?
Yeah, we did say that.
Right, Keith?
I don't know if my book was there, but we did.
And this is somebody else's book. But somebody, they even had it underlined, so I don't know who was using this book, but it was underlined. Had to rely on hand with it. It just was right there, so I just started digging. I don't have my work papers.
And so what page are you on there?
I won it.
I won it. You see what I'm saying?
Yes. No. I just say that you need to look at that, please, between now and when you get with the rest of the folks. But I distinctly remember us having that conversation. And that we, no, we thought-
The final number we got from-
Matthew.
Matthew.
Yeah, he gave us that.
Yeah.
The new number. And if we weren't gonna use all eight-eight in one year.
Yeah. That says loan, USDA wastewater loan.
Yeah, but we're being given an eight million dollar loan. One was three something and one was one point four. So that if you use all loan, it's five million dollars.
Yeah, but see, this was before we made that change.
But the, my point is that number is not gonna be eight-eight.
Yeah. That-
Correct?
It'll be whatever. I can't even remember what the loan is off the top of my head.
I can't, but it's around five.
Right.
But everybody understands you have to use the loan money first. And then you gotta make sure you use every dime of that grant. Okay, anyway, just might get a look at that because I remember us discussing, as Jackie remembers us having this discussion even Thursday night. But we got, look, it's his first reading. We've got some time. That's the good news. So with all that being said, any questions?
We'll make sure that we get that clearly clarified, so you know, understand.
It's clear as mud. It's like, some of it's hard to understand even.
How much of it's loan, how much is grant? We just, for second someplace, do we just put them all together?
Right. But I, I remember that conversation, so. Anyway, hearing no questions, entertain a motion for the first read.
Move that we accept ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-six.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Got a second?
Are you approving the new one or the current one?
The red ink one, that Cory presented?
As amended.
As amended, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Even better. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. C, ordinance twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-seven, again, this is a first reading, an ordinance to convert South Walnut Street into one-way street in the city. Uh, and here is the ordinance to be more described in the ordinance. Everybody's welcome to a copy of it. I have not read this, but is this going from north to south? As in-
First, yeah.
Okay.
And that's what was recommended by M. Test. It's also-
That's what I thought it probably was, but I just wanted to ask that question.
And this is something that the planning commission also recommended as part of that, um, townhome development, small townhome development on, uh, Little Street.
Well, we said up on Thursday, probably probably was already anywhere.
Yeah.
But it not. It will be now. That's the good news. All right, understanding this is a first reading, entertain a motion.
They can motion if we pass twenty twenty-two dash ten ninety-seven, changing Warner Street to a one-way street for the safety of the community.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? Got a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. D, resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen, a resolution adopting the capital improvement plan for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee.
And Mayor and Commissioners, uh, uh, this is attached to the resolution. And what I had said at the, uh, study session is that we're not committing you to any of this funding. It's just we're gonna continue to, um, prioritize projects and, and seek for funding. You know, some of these are very large amounts of money that obviously we don't have, but they're still on our radar as really needing to get done. So this is something that's gonna be, um, a living document that will come back and say, hey, we knocked this one out, and this one's still on our radar, and it'll, it'll be changing. We, at, at, at a minimum, we will look at it every year, hopefully more often than that.
For everybody's information, it's akin to your plan. Uh, so it's not gonna, you're not gonna, when you see it, it's not gonna all happen in one day.
Some things are even out more than that.
Yeah, but it looks at the vehicles, will have to replace, equipment, everything. First time the city will have it, we'll start getting some money in the budget for, so we can start doing some streets.
And it's a good thing.
And it is a good thing, isn't it? I'm gonna do pay it. Yep. All right. Entertain, entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen.
I'll make a motion in favor of resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifteen as presented.
Got a motion? Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. E, resolution twenty twenty-two dash sixteen, a resolution in the city of Mount Pleasant accepting a donation of land to be added to Arrow Mines Park.
And Mayor and Commissioners, uh, I'm gonna turn it over to Cory because she's had conversations with the owner, who's also an attorney. And he wanted to do it a little bit differently than the way, the, the way we recommended.
I should have said, "Costs."
So you have a, um, a revised draft of the resolution accepting this donation. So the way I had it drafted before, he was gonna go ahead and sign the deed, and then we would accept it. For whatever reason, he wanted us to pass this resolution before. Yeah, so I just changed the language to say that upon execution, we will accept the deed. That way we don't have to wait until next time. But, um, we've given him all the things that he requested, and hopefully we're adding to a park.
Tennessee S Main Street LLC.
Out of Miami.
Is the, uh, grantor, and it's awfully nice of him to do.
It is.
Any questions, comments?
Yes, so we said, "Thank you."
Yeah, no kidding. Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept a resolution ti- twenty-two dash sixteen.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, bid award on Falls Creek, and for everybody information, that's on the water line across the street from the water plant that during the flood, it got washed out.
And we are gonna ask the Mayor and Commissioners if we would defer this to June. This is something that we are getting, uh, partial funding from FEMA, and they'd already agreed to pay, uh, eighty-five, ninety-five thousand dollars. And then this came in overbid, and now we're attempting to fill that gap with them. And it's gonna take a little bit more time, and this bid will still be good at our June meeting. So we just need some time, you know, how it is to work with FEMA. We need a little bit more time to figure out exactly what we can and can't do.
Okay.
So I would ask you, is that the correct way to say it?
Defer it.
Okay.
Until the next meeting.
Yeah, defer until the June meeting.
Yeah, and that's June twenty-first.
Any comments, questions? Entertain a motion to defer.
I'll make a motion to defer to June meeting.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. G, bid award for towing services, and we need to make everybody aware that it appears that Gray's Towing is going to be the-
Low bid.
Low bid, and that uh, one of their employees, owners, probably more than employees, is an employee of the city of Mount Pleasant, being Brian Gray, even the police department, but we wanna make sure that's on the table.
Anything else we need to be concerned about? So the big difference was that the rate of two hundred and fifty dollars per tow to a hundred and seventy-five, and it's clearly uh, the lower bid, so that's what we recommend this time.
Any comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to award Gray's towing service.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. H, bid award HVAC services, which went to Bradley McNeese Company.
It was a sole bidder, and it was eighteen hundred dollars, and that's what we would recommend that uh, you all approve.
All right. Any questions or comments? This is just for general, like repairs and all.
Yes, if if it's be above, how much money? Twenty-five hundred dollars, they gotta come back and say, do you wanna fix this? And and if we can decide, yes, we wanna fix it, we wanna bid it out, or what we wanna do.
I think it includes two visits a year to each location, too.
Yes, it's on, they come twice a year and look through all of our systems.
And they also change the filters.
Filters, yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah. All right, any comments or questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Move that we uh, award the uh, bid for HVAC services to Bradley McNeese Company.
All right. Got a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. I, bid award weed control at the lagoon. I can't remember the name. Who got the bid on lagoons?
Um, it is Nature Chem.
That's it.
We had Chempro and Nature Chem, and Nature Chem was a couple thousand dollars cheaper, and we've worked with them, both of them before, for a thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and that's who we would recommend would be Nature Chem.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Nature Chem to be the, be awarded the weed control at the lagoons.
Got a second? All those in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We had a bunch signed up, but they all got up and left.
Yeah, we had another one.
Now we don't have anybody.
I'm glad they left, because I didn't want them to hear that we're making taxes increases.
Any comments from any of the commissioners? Will we get an emotion to adjourn?
Um, I'd like to uh, throw some, throw some honor to our local radio station, um, WXRQ, Red Cones. Uh, I don't know if y'all are aware of the outreach that uh, WXRQ has, but um, my class did a project uh, around the roaring twenties. I won't bore you with all the details, but we did a roaring twenties radio show in each class. Uh, the kids picked the song and interfered it like a DJ, and they created commercials and all that stuff uh, on roaring twenties products. And then Greg put it on the air for free. Y'all, we had six point eight million people listening worldwide. There were forty-one thousand people in the United States that were listening and listen every day. There's sixteen thousand people in Marion County that listen to WXRQ during the day, so we've got a gem. So if you've got friends that are looking for advertising, like if we can advertise and stuff, we need to be using Greg because he's so cheap. Uh, he's much cheaper than a lot of radio stations, and besides the benefit of getting advertising, they prey over the businesses that advertise with them, so that's another benefit as well, so.
They could do live broadcasts of football and some basketball games.
Yeah, basketball, football games. Um, so I I just wanna share that with everybody, and uh, that's another great thing about doing that, brother.
All right, anybody else? You wanna entertain a motion for adjourn?
I'll make a motion for adjourn.
We got all kinds of seconds, and all those in favor? Aye.